Hankins?
Here.
Power Socks?
Here.
Triplets?
Here.
Sires?
Here.
Pregnant?
Yes.
Here. Gotta practice your name more. Wonderful. I'll take a motion.
Hey, Jenny, did you get me noted in there too?
Nope, I didn't. Thank you. I didn't see you doing. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Great. At this point in time, we have public comment with those in the audience that would like to speak on anything that is not on the agenda. Seeing none, we'll move on to number five, which is approval of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting minutes for January 17th, 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Second. Do you roll up all of this? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Oh, same sign. Okay, moving on to item number six. Recommend council plat of survey for 7722 Northwest 142nd Avenue.
Yeah, I'm not sure if there's anyone here in the audience that's here.
Do you want to speak on it, or we can, how, do we begin to have staff directly your hall?
My councilor just told me to be here and pitch out any questions.
Fair enough.
Oh, okay. Yeah, essentially, this is a plat of survey for a parcel that's to be sold off that would be west of an existing home on 142nd Street. It's within your extraterritorial jurisdiction, so it does need to come through the city. It, since it's just the first lot split and there's no public improvements or anything, it can be done by a plat. They've already got the needed right-of-way, so there was no need for, to designate any future right-of-way taken for the city. And we had asked them, as we typically do, that they note that there would be no more than one driveway permitted for the new parcel. And since they're in the, not in the city, they do not, are not required to provide a position away from sidewalks at this point. The lots and the remnant all meet Hope City code.
Any discussion members? If not, I would take a motion?
I'll make a motion that we recommend the council approval of the plat of survey for 7722 Northwest 142nd Avenue, subject to engineer and staff's comments dated February 11th, 2022.
Pregnant? Hankins?
Yes.
Power Socks?
Yes.
Triplets?
Yes.
Sires?
Yes.
Vogels?
Yes.
Item number seven, recommend council approve the ACG property's rezoning request for 302 South 2nd Street. Anyone in the audience who'd like to address this?
I would. So that's, I'm Mandy Torres. We bought the old funeral home slash church.
Mandy, could you state your name and address?
Oh, yes, sorry. Mandy Torres, 1905 Meadowlark Drive, Hope City.
Go ahead, sorry.
Yes, so we purchased the old church building. It is currently zoned C1 usage for funeral home. And we are seeking to have it, the usage changed to civic organizations. We would like to open like a game lounge, youth center for the kids in our community.
Questions?
So...
Sir, could you state your name and address and leave? Thank you, sorry.
Mike Detail, 213. So, how is the traffic going to be controlled in the situation? Where's the parking? I'm the White House.
We have, we're working with the city on parking spaces for what our usage would be. We are, our prime market will be actually kids that cannot drive. So, you know, we are hoping that a lot will just ride bikes or walk in the community. It's, right now, I know the parking lot ends up full with a lot of overflow from the square. We know that we might have to put up signs that say it is for our sole usage, because we don't have a lot of parking on the square. But we are working with the city to make sure that we've been up parking spots based on our usage.
To my understanding, the process through this is that you need 75% of everyone within 250 feet to approve of this?
We need 51% to start the process for rezoning.
51?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you go through three meetings for it?
So this will still have to go to the city council. So you start with P and Z. The P and Z commission will either approve this or not recommend it tonight. And then a rezoning actually is a change to the city ordinance. So the council will have a public hearing and three readings of the ordinance. And those three readings will most likely occur at separate meetings.
So do you have enough signatures?
Yes.
It's, it's, just, you know, it's, the 51% is by area, not by the number of owners. So it's, so you take kind of the total square footage of everything around the square. You exclude properties that's owned by the city, which would include street right-of-way. And like, say, if it got on to, you know, there are some city-owned properties, and those are all excluded. Essentially, the city properties are governmental and they're considered controlled. So if the remainder, then, it has to be 50% and based on area.
Excuse me. John Volkes, 204 Wood Street. So does that include, like, rentals? I mean, if I, can I represent my tenants?
It, it, the notifications go out to the mailing.
Well, my tenant doesn't have a Hope City address. He uses a 1880.
Yeah, the mailings go out to the property owner, as it's listed on Hope County's website. So whoever gets the taxes is the, is the entity that gets the notification.
But you just said that it wasn't just the property owners, it was the residents?
No, no, I, well, I'm sorry. I missed, when I said resident, I meant the property owners by area.
Well, I've got a couple of questions to follow up on the traffic. I've lived there 25 years. I've had the police come over there and ask for put radar up, because people from down the east end, what I'm calling it, one of us just apartments, terrible. They go by their 50 miles now. We asked for speed bumps. At one time, we had a sign up that said, "Slow down, children at play." For some reason, the city took it down. Asked, you know, when Jerry Carveling was on the city council, this is when we were pursuing it. Because there was just too much traffic and people not slow down. And it's gotten worse in the last 20 years. As you all know, if you drive out there in the traffic, there's a lot idiots out there. And I drove a truck for a living, and it's like, it's scary. So that's one of my concerns, is the traffic and controlling the traffic. Because there's a lot more, and there's nothing to curb their speeding. I mean, if you go out on Bridge Road, you can get a speeding ticket for going 45 and 35. But you can do 45 down to 25 in town and nothing happens. There's nobody, you know, to me, it's like, you don't care about the people that actually live in town? Because what's out there up Bridge Road? Now, there's a few more things, you know. But you got soccer fields and stuff out there, but they'll keep their speed, because then they can sit there. Because the city, the police, we don't have the right kind of radar.
When, when was the last time you asked the police department to come?
But it's been a while.
Okay, so if you can tell me what streets you would like, we could look into putting our mobile trailer out there?
Wood Street, right there, right across from the church.
Okay.
Because it's basically a blind intersection, especially when Chad Suter and the gang pile the snow up there on the corner. And I complain to the city, and the city guys have come to move the snow out. Because you stop, that stop sign with the bushes and stuff there, which were trimmed last year, and the city came by and told them to trim up the bushes. But that whole corner is blind. You know, with the evergreens, I can't remember their names, but people in the, I call it the gingerbread house, right across from the church. Yeah, the plumber guy, they've got that big evergreen. Also plans to, what, widen the street? Which way is it going to go? Because it would heat up the sidewalk from the 18-foot levee, you know. Because the center of the street, the pin is in there, and I know, I've measured it.
I'd be happy.
That's on the agenda for the streets and stuff like that, but...
I'd be happy to talk to the police department about doing some extra monitoring in that area.
But it's, because it's gotten worse.
Okay.
Mike, okay, so it's, it's going to be parents dropping kids off and picking them up. When the church, Efree Church, I was one of the trustees at the Efree Church, and then Lakeside Fellowship got it. And when they'd have functions, they didn't care where they parked. And I've had the police down there a couple of times. Why these people taking, you know, well, you know, they can park on your lawn, because it's within the 18-foot of the center. And they just pull up and it was down in, into the yard. And it's like, well, they don't take care of it. And if I did that at their house out on Meadowlark Lane, you'd be pissed. So I've been through it. And it ended up the Efree Church, or the Lakeside Fellowship, told their people not to park there. Because I was, I was hot. You know, it was basically, heck with you, what are you going to do about it? And I've had the police down there a couple of times, and they finally policed themselves. And foot traffic, if they're riding their bikes and so, they're going to cut through his lawn, my lawn. You go to the pizza place, the taco place, and you get done with the taco, what are you going to do with the wrapper? You can throw it down right where you're at, if you're a kid. He's going to clean that up, me and him. You know?
We will have outdoor trash cans and help, have our staff help pick it up. But we can't control people dropping kids from the litter.
Well, that's, for me, you know, that's falling back on me, which brings me to my property value. Now I've got foot traffic through my lawn, over there all the time, in the prime hours. When I get home from work, I want to sit out on my deck and enjoy myself. Okay? I don't think it's a good plan to have basically a Summerfest foot traffic all year round. Because that just takes my property value and goes, boom, I have no peace when I get home. You know, you want to get home, sit at your picnic table or out on your deck and have a beer? I'm going to do that for the youth?
I understand that. I don't anticipate that we would have...
Five o'clock in the afternoon.
The same amount of traffic that the Four Seasons Festival gets, or that even BBS will get. I mean, I would love if we were that popular, but I just don't see that happening. Our prime reasoning is, just today, I drove past the square, and in the middle of the day, there was a mom and a toddler trying to use the park. And there were teenagers on the swings and standing on the toddler playground on their cell phone. Because our kids have nowhere else to go.
Okay, so wouldn't the solution to that problem just be put more swing sets, equipment up in the park? Rather than, let's move it over to a neighborhood where people live?
Possibly. There's not really a lot of room to put swing sets. I don't know that teenagers are really looking for swing sets in their playgrounds. We're hoping to offer them something else. We're hoping to give them their own yard games that they could possibly play. We're hoping to bring them inside, get them off their phones. We'll have table games such as pool, ping pong, foosball. We want to have creative space downstairs, a photo studio for kids that want to get into making movies and have a green room. We have a ton of photographers in town that don't have their own studio. It'd be a space that they could rent and utilize. I definitely get your frustrations. I have heard from friends that live in the neighborhood. It is, traffic would be a concern for me, too. I don't want traffic flying at 40 miles an hour when we have kids that might cross the street and go from our building to a dance studio. I would gladly back you in making sure that that gets taken care of. Litter is a problem of mine. We will pick, I would be happy to help you clean up your yard.
Oh, you wouldn't want to get around my yard? I have, I have a big dog.
I agree.
Yeah.
Big dogs don't scare.
No, it's not even scaring you, it's walking in the yard. But those are, you know, it, it's outside supervision. You know, that's a concern of mine, that you don't cut through between our houses or across our yards to go to the pizza place. You know, stuff like that. And you can't, you're not going to be able to control that. You just, you can have all the good intentions you want. I grew up, we had youth centers and stuff, and we always used to go, you know, whoever was running. You know, that you have good intentions. And I'll let, for kids, we had the pool tables, the foosball tables, and this is in the 70s, when we didn't know it. But it just, it's not a good thing, not in the neighborhood. They did put one in Hampton, that's where I'm from, small town. Old converted gas station out away from the rest. You know, it was beside a restaurant and barber shop and, you know, and across the street from the grade school. And it just kind of isolated us, the kids, teenagers, away from residential areas where no, because they have been residential. It wasn't. And that's just from my experience. I know other towns probably have them, but location, 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 isn't it? And I really don't think, the busy 3rd street at Wood. And now the other street, what is it, a church on the other side?
Yeah.
You know, with residential down at that end, it's going to get nothing but worse. Because frankly, people just don't give a shit, they're grabbing. They just really don't. And it's sad. And you'd have to have a policeman there almost 24/7 on each of the streets, you know. Because once they learn, and they fly. That's, we yell at them. I hope you'd yell at them, too. Slow down, you know, and basically you get...
Okay, on that note.
Yeah, you know.
I appreciate your comments. Anyone else in the audience have any? If not...
Wendy, tell the 213 Wood Street. My concern is how many people will be monitored, like, working there to just monitor these children?
Well, we do plan on having an adult there at all times. Until we have it set up, it's hard to know exactly what the set will be like. But I would anticipate at least three or four just on the side. To have us ride out. And we also plan on putting cameras up outside to help monitor the property. So because, we will not be open all the time. I mean, just like, there's not always someone on the square, and they, that's, I'm sure we will make sure we know.
What operating hours are you, like, what do you look at?
So we would anticipate starting smaller, just to kind of judge the needs. So probably like Thursday through Sunday in the evenings. It would be starting like 3:00 in the afternoon, anticipating no later than 11:00. And then on Sundays, it would just be shorter hours in camp.
Wouldn't it have to follow the city noise ordinances and stuff like that, that no noise after 10:00 on a weeknight? And midnight on Fridays and Saturdays?
Yeah.
Okay, so again, devaluing my property, when I get home from work, tax companies, I go to work, I come home. I want to sit outside peaceful, and my deck is right there, and so is his. And my renters, too. And he's at work right now, working at Fairway in Huxley. And he's like, huh, you know, and I'm sure if he asked his renters, they'd probably say the same thing. Because what, you own three properties rented away?
Anyone else?
Would you like, I mean, would you put such a facility across the street from your home? I mean...
Yeah, I would have a.
Say, go ahead.
There's not room, and it's not some commercial in my area.
Kathleen, did you have anything on this that you wanted to go over with us?
I, I don't really think so. I mean, they did, they had, I believe it was 53 point, some, 53.5% of consenting to the rezoning. And that, that was really it. I mean, they met the requirements. And it's really not a rezoning. It's just a change in the restricted uses that are already on the property. They would be taking off the funeral home, so funeral homes, as it is now, would not, would no longer be allowed there. So that it would just strictly for the city.
Which is what it currently is, but not the funeral rate, is that correct?
So yeah, now it would, now it could be a funeral home, instead of being a...
Got it.
So if something, pardon me, if something changes, youth center doesn't, it's rezoning? So they take the youth center and make it into a restaurant?
No, not according to the current zone.
Okay, but there's, but three or four, I read it, but I don't have to.
Yeah, it, what it would allow, just a second. It would allow private clubs, so be, I suppose, like a office or something, Legion Hall, lodges, youth centers, veterans, organizations, except those holding beer permits or liquor license. So there, it could not be anything that would have a liquor license or a beer license. And no, it couldn't, so it couldn't be a restaurant or any other commercial use at all. If they, if for some reason, this, this didn't work out, or they changed their mind or whatever, they would have to, and they want to be a completely different. They would either have to rezon to something different, or at minimum, change the, come back and ask, do what they're doing now, which would be to change the permitted uses on the property.
Not a social club, but something?
As long as they didn't serve alcohol, they could.
So you could put in Bachelor's Library without serving beer, and you bring your own in?
You can't bring your own in.
Yeah, Bachelor's Library in Des Moines.
Okay, I, this is a long, you, you can't have a permit, so I would, I would say, anything that would serve alcohol, you have there.
So they don't serve it, you bring your own in?
Right.
Well...
Yes, thank you. We're going to go to the commissioners and see if they have any questions regarding this project.
Just kind of my recollection, as far as how we got here, was, you know, we had a church. It was no longer a church, and we had someone who was wanting to put in the business. Normally, when we do a rezoning, we go, we, we zone it as a specific kind of area, you know, a C1, C2. And then with that, we approve, approve, you know, the entire matrix of acceptable uses for that zoning. We felt this property was a little different. And so, because it, it is, it's on the edge of the town square commercial district. It did have homes on many sides. It also, unlike most properties in that area, it did have off-street parking and also had on-street parking in front of the building. And there was just a lot of unique things that were, that were about this property. And so we kind of chose a different approach at that time, as opposed to making it be a zoning of the entire matrix, perhaps having some limitations, pulling some things off. We just approved it for one use, and that was the one use that the applicant had at the time, which was funeral home. Believing that then, if that would ever change from a funeral home to something else, that we would then get a chance to look at it again and look at it specifically. And it looks like at this point in time, you know, that's what we're doing. We're talking about removing funeral home, adding this new use to keep this building and man property productive, but still limiting it in the same fashion. So if we ever want to change it again to something else, we'll go through this process, yeah. That's just kind of my observation as far as how we got here.
Yeah, that, I think that's a very good summary. The only thing I would add to that is, they will then have to come forward with a site plan. And at that time, we will look at the park calculations to see, does existing parking meet those requirements? Where they need to expand it, that kind of thing. And we're, we're just haven't got to that point as yet. So I just want you to be aware, it will be in front of you for that.
One more question on that property. I can't put a mailbox on my side of the street, and the post office has got to go ahead with that. So do I get one of them parking spots?
You get to talk with the post office or the city at another time, fortunately, for those kind of things.
Okay, I didn't know.
Yep, yep. Thank you, I appreciate that. Any other comments for the commission? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion that we recommend...
Oh, sorry, sorry, Dave.
This is Doug. I'm, I'm the invisible man.
Yes?
Okay. Just, Kathleen, help me just a little bit. This is, what they want to do is like a youth center, community center, is that correct?
Yes.
And right now, that's restricted, so that's why they need to come and ask for change. Is that correct?
Yeah, correct. Right now, the only, the only use of the property that's permitted at this point in time is a funeral home.
Okay.
So that's...
Thanks. And I, I know it's probably not required, but one of the things I heard here is a concern for traffic. And there seems to be maybe a few things we ought to maybe look at a little further before we jump in and just change things. It is in a residential area. When a person buys a home, they should be aware of what's around them. And, and probably, I don't know how long the church has been there, the homes have been there. But it's, it's been quite a while, so anyways, probably bought a home since the church was there, know that the church was there. We changed it to a funeral home. And the use of a church and a funeral home is usually limited to a couple, three days at most, maybe during the week, if even that. Especially maybe with funeral home. So I see something here that now is going to be used every day and in the evening. And it, it just seems like maybe we should talk about this a little bit more, have a traffic study, maybe. I think we can require that stuff before we pass it on. I think it's information that the city council would also like to consider, because these same people are going to go to city council when this goes, they're going to ask these same questions. And it seems to me that we ought to be proactive here and maybe try and give as much information as we can before we send this on, either a yes or no vote. So I, you know, with that, I don't think I'm ready to vote yes on it yet. I think it's an admirable idea for the city. I've done community centers. I've never put them right in the middle of a residential area. And I've been on planning zoning for, and John's been here for 30 years. And we, to my knowledge, have never done any. So I think we need to consider this a little bit more and kind of look at things and take into account maybe the concerns that might come up and have already been brought up. Can we do a traffic study?
Who are you asking to do a traffic study, Doug? Are you asking the city to do it, or are you asking for the developer to do it?
I'm asking for the people who want, want to change this.
Oh.
Wouldn't that be normal? I mean, Hy-Vee, for instance, going in, I think that was required to do that, a traffic study, that.
That's at the, yeah, that's at the site plan approval process generally, though.
Yeah.
You could require it now.
They're asking for zoning, so you can't put whatever stipulations the city, you know, chooses, but...
Would, so Kathleen, would you, would you tack that on now, or would you tack that on with the site plan?
You know, I guess it do, yeah, either way, I guess.
So we've made people do it with their site plan, though?
Yeah, that's, that's, at this point in time, that's the only time. Yeah, to, that's, that's, at this point in time, that's the only time. I mean, the school did one with their site plan and I guess just to, you know, like, I mean, I, I believe schools are, are permitted uses, which would be a similar kind of use uh, in the C one zoning district. So, I mean, just as an FYI, for a compare, for kind of a gut comparison.
Yeah, well, I, you know, I think there's a problem and uh, I think it needs to be resolved before we pass that city council. Uh, the only way I can resolve it at this point is to vote no, because I'm not ready to vote no.
Anyone else?
I have some other concerns too, but they, you know, they're, they're minor. They have to do with, you know, what is the platform lift, is that? Um, and you know, when we had the funeral home, uh, we had, there's no access there for the A A. And so they, I believe they were not allowed to have a, like a community event down there or a, um, you know, an after funeral dinner or something like that. And um, so I'm not quite sure what's going on there. There should be some restrictions as to what can be held that. Um, a platform lift is not an elevator.
It operates very similar to an elevator, Doug. Sorry, I know, I don't know if you see me, I don't know if it works that way. An operator, an op, uh, the lift is similar to an elevator, it'll be boxed in, a wheelchair does go in and is lowered, it's just smaller and it's not um, as large. There's one at Ames Hockey Arena, um, there's one at Bob Brown, um, that I've seen, those are the two locally that I know that I've seen that are in the same style, but it is essentially an elevator.
Yeah, that, no, it's not. Uh, I'm sorry. Uh, I've been an architect for fifty years. I've done a lot of, is there a certain restrictions on that? The state has restrictions on that? Have you talked to the building code department about what you want to do there?
Um, as far as the lift goes?
Yeah.
Uh, we talked, we had someone come out and told them what we needed and that was their recommendation.
Okay.
Because we don't want just the chairlift that goes down the stairs, which was the funeral homes.
Yeah, that's fine. There's a certain restriction to what you do and uh, there are permits that are, require certain things like enclosures and some of that stuff and.
Yes, it would be enclosed.
Yeah, it depends on the height and stuff like that. So um, I, but that stuff can all be wiped out. It said there was to be a structural report that was included in this, I never saw that. Uh, so I don't know how that affects that, but again, we have a building department that.
Just hide your respect, maybe?
Yeah, my, my concern is, is the effect it has on the neighborhood. And um, I, I just think that's uh, again, admirable thing that you're doing. Think it's a great asset for our city to have something like this. It's a great uh, adaptive reuse of a building. Uh, that something needs to be done other than to sit there and rot away. So I think there's a lot of good things here, but I, I'd like to know a little bit more. Uh, and I think the um, people that live in this area would like to know a little bit more. So that possibly we could suggest some things that are, recommend some things to city council that should be done that go along with the change of this. And right now those things are not known and then they're. Thank you.
Any other comments from commission members?
Uh, yeah, I, I mean, Doug raises good points regarding the traffic study and, and other issues. Always appreciate his insight. Uh, I guess uh, getting, you know, and in hearing staff kind of talking back and forth as well, uh, you know, that that's normally done with the site plan. Uh, this is a little different uh, from your basic rezoning or change in zoning, I guess would be a better word, where we are really only allowing one use. And uh, and so, you know, it doesn't make sense for us to change the only one use to something new when we are believing that a traffic study is going to eventually need to be done that could, you know, influence whether that's the right thing or not. And so uh, you know, I guess. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm wondering whether it would make sense to, you know, entertain, you know, what are options of how we handle this tonight, I guess, is, is what I'm, uh, is what I'm trying to work through myself. Uh, you know, do we make a motion to approve uh, knowing that the traffic study will be coming later? Uh, and, or do we make a motion to approve, you know, subject to completing a traffic study uh, before this goes to council? You know, we can phrase the motion however we would like. Uh, under that circumstance, council sees the traffic study, we don't. Uh, I consider that a, a bit of a detriment to our work. Uh, and so those are questions I have, I guess, at this point in time.
Kathleen, do you have a recommendation?
Um, at minimum, I would recommend that you, that you make a recommendation subject to a traffic study before the, prior to the site plan, so that that's in the ordinance. Um, just to make it clear it's a requirement, um, because like we haven't gone through the trip generation to know for certain that this, this use would actually even trigger the need for your, for your site plan regulations. So it could, if it, if it, if they went through the initial step, they could wind up bypassing. That would be, I guess, though. And then the scope would be determined, I mean, seeing, we would have to determine what the scope was and what they needed to look at in terms of the impact on the neighborhood.
So in a traffic study, can you tell me a little bit more, like what is involved in that? Is that?
Yeah, so they come out and do an analysis of the traffic, they'll come out, do traffic counts, um, traffic patterns, and they will kind of review that information and put together what's driving that data for the traffic patterns.
So would they put up one of them?
Please, sorry. Um, um, the Department of Transportation.
No, usually a consulting firm, like Snyder would do a traffic study for us. Um, we, and that's common. So we would ask the, are you guys using CDA? So who are you, who are you using for your um, project? Using Aaron Olendike with CDA?
Yes, yes.
So CDA would probably do their traffic study for them.
Or they may have a sub.
Or a, yeah.
Hundred percent sure CDA does that, but. And then they would also analyze, analyze what's the direction that the traffic is, you know, as they're leaving the parking lot, for example, how much of the traffic is gonna go right into the neighborhood and how much is actually gonna go directly to Third Street. So it would look at that block right in front too and then, and look at how that would.
And do they look only for automobiles or do they also look?
This is what exists right now. This is for what would happen if that um, community center, whatever you want to call it, is with there.
Right.
They would also count pedestrians and people in bicycles. It'd be like a full traffic study of all traffic, yep.
But if it's not open, it's not gonna be what it is.
Well, there's, there's guy, the Iowa or International Institute of Traffic Engineers or some, and I'm not a traffic.
They're gonna make.
They have, yeah, they have to use.
They'll make a guess at it. So what I was gonna recommend is, are they gonna have speed monitors?
So sir, sir, we have a time uh, in our agenda for the public to ask questions and to give a presentation. We normally limit that three minutes each. We've been very generous tonight.
Okay.
But we're trying to conduct uh, P and Z's business at this point.
I have one more point.
That, that, that's, that's my opinion, I guess.
I was gonna say, why not table it until you get the stuff done? That's all I was gonna say, table. You know, that was a parliamentary procedure.
Thank you, appreciate that. Um, Mandy, I am very excited that you are looking for our, um, I want to put that on the table because uh, having young kids that would utilize this, I think it's fantastic. I appreciate what you are all saying, um, wanting this in your neighborhood. I get it. Nobody wants change in their neighborhood. I get that. Wholeheartedly. However, we have a community, it is growing, it has a lot of youth, we need somewhere for them to go. And I think this is a really great um, uh, project you're taking on and I think it will be, give those teens an opportunity, young teens, pre-teens, to get together and to not congregate where our, our small kiddos want to be. So I applaud you for taking this on. Um, anyone else want to make comments or we could look for a motion to however you want to do it?
Dan, I just had a quick question too. Um, looking to the owners, would you be looking at doing programming or is this stop and go as needed, you know, drop kids off, roping or is it more of a class time setting?
Um, the game area will be just kind of come and go, you know, if they want to hang out all day or for an hour in between dance classes. Um, we do eventually want to be able to offer um, programs, say in our craft room or um, with the green room, we could even partner with Parks and Rec and be able to, you know, work with them so that they could offer photography classes or um, you know, cooking in the kitchen that will be in the community room or, you know, some sort of craft thing. Um, they would be able to bring the kids to play games during the day or something like that. We would love to be able to partner with the city and do things like that because our kids are already at the square. There's just not a lot there for them to do.
Okay. Yeah, just trying to get an idea of the impact on the traffic patterns. If it's like a church service obviously has heavy loads, start and stop and schools and oh, this would differ.
Commissioner, how are you feeling?
Make the, the approval of the.
Uh, so I am considering making a motion and so if I make this motion, subject to completion uh, of a traffic study prior to the site plan, uh, I'm just wanting to get back to some comments made earlier. Then that means that the site, that the traffic study must happen uh, before they come into the site plan, even if there's a calculation that might show that it may or may not be needed. As long as it's in the motion, it will be done.
Yeah, they would have to do one. Again, I would talk to, you know, our, our traffic engineers would look at the scope work that would be done based on what kind of first step would be in terms of trip generation. So, and that, we would probably need some more information in terms of the floor plan so that they can see uses inside the building, you know. Um, because they're, they're, obviously it's a multi-story building and there's a variety of uses there, so depending on what, how those spaces are allocated, that may impact what the trip, trip, trip generation is. So, but yeah, you could make it, I mean, obviously that would also then mean that council needs to follow your, your recommendation. I mean, you know, you would be recommended, but assuming that the council did, then, then it would be required.
And uh, you know, we're, we're talking about a business that hopes to grow over time, uh, and you know, broaden what, what they're offering. How does a traffic study get done? Uh, when you have a business that's, you know, wanting to grow over time and, and we would.
I assume it would be based on.
Have that opportunity.
Well, I, I assume it would be based on the existing structure, that if they ever expanded to the point that they were gonna expand their building.
Okay.
All bets are off, you know, they could have to re, require more parking stalls, that kind of thing. I mean, one of the things a traffic study may look at, for example, is if there needs to be a drop-off lane, similar to what was required at the school. There may need to be at least some route that's intended to, and has maybe a, you might lose a space or two that provides a place for parents to pull up, drop off their kids or pick them up. Similar, you might have it at a daycare. I mean, those are the kinds of things. I'm not saying a full designated lane, but at least a drop-off spot where this is where, yeah, where, where that's designated, as, as one example you might look at.
Ron, the, the occupancy or the square footage of the building would determine the occupancy. How many people would be there and that also determines the parking standards. And so there would be a, an established number that's, that's there, that's to be used. And as Kathleen said, if they were wanting to expand it, they'd have to expand everything else too with that. Um, so it gives us, it's a, uh, with the motion, I think you're, you're wanting to make is good and it'll give us an opportunity to look at that. Also, it'll give us an opportunity so we're not guessing uh, in saying, well, this is gonna happen or this isn't gonna happen. And it, it will help uh, just answer a lot of questions. So I would, I appreciate you making the motion and I'll second it when you make it.
Okay, uh, any other question? Uh, I make a motion that we recommend to council approval of the ACG properties rezoning request for three oh two South Second Street, uh, which removes the permitted use of funeral home and will add the permitted use of allowing, uh, I'm sorry, uh, to only allow public clubs, lodges, youth center or veterans organizations, except those holding a beer permit or liquor license, uh, subject to staff and engineers' comments dated February fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and additionally, uh, subject to requiring a traffic study be completed for the site prior to presentation of a site plan to P and Z and council.
I'll second that and just to clarify that we will have an opportunity at that point to make a better recommendation on where, so it still could go as a no vote to the council, depending on what we hear in the site plan. So the owner's gonna have some money involved with doing something to get that. Thank you.
Sires?
Yes.
Vogel?
Yes.
Pregnant? Hankins?
Yes.
Fowler-Socks?
Yes.
Yes. Having passed, we will move on to item number eight, reports and particulars. Council liaison, city managers. I don't have anything this evening. Nothing, Mr. Walker?
I have nothing to report.
Commissioners? Then I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. I make a motion to adjourn. You have a second? Okay. Sorry. Flexie glass. All in favor? Hi.
Hi.
Thank you everyone.
Hi, Justin.
Bye, Justin.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I cut him off.
All right, so this is a map I have for you.